On the council, when the Opera House opened, and the intent was always that the Opera House would become independent. And I have real problems with the monies that we have been putting into the Opera House over the last number of years, so...
Can you talk to me about those problems?
Well, I think that $170,000, $165,000 is too much, considering how we have very, very limited abilities to raise the levy. And this is levied money. And so my question to you is, do you have a business plan? If not, when is it going to surface? And when will we see it?
I wouldn't say that we have a business plan in the sense that you would if you were operating completely as a private business. The decision to fund those two positions over at the Opera House was something that was made in, I think it was 2012 maybe, when that decision was made. As far as the specific question about a business plan, I've had conversations with the Opera House Friends Association, as well as members of this group, and the mayor, and so forth, about what kinds of opportunities we'll have going forth to open up other revenue streams, both through the relocation of some of the departments in City Hall, as well as other methods. But to get to the subtext, I would strongly disagree with you that the city isn't getting a return that justifies the expense of that $170,000. Because I think it represents 17% of the revenues that we bring in. And the other, I can't do the math on it off the top of my head, because I actually ran over for an Opera House show, but...
Actually, I did not say... Don't put words in my mouth, okay? I didn't say that. I have, I do have problems with the fact that we are subsidizing you. And I would like to see a plan where you become, where the Opera House becomes much more independent of the city's revenue. Again, because we have very little options in how we can raise our levy. And this is an area where I think that a good business plan, if implemented, could actually, you could, we could reduce your dependency on the city. And so that is my request, is to have a business plan presented to us so that we can see that in the future, your dependency on the city is being reduced. I'm not saying that you're not a positive, you know, to the city. You are a positive. But the issue is, we have, we are very constrained. And this is an opportunity, you know, where I see that if a good business plan is put in place, we can reduce the dependency on the tax levy.
Yeah, and I just, and I couldn't agree with you more that it would be nice to be completely independent of the city. I would say that the amount of the subsidy is far less than comparable communities. The one that I think about is somebody like Woodstock. I know that you're not in Illinois. I know you're not specifically saying that you think that the city shouldn't put any money into the Opera House. You'd just like to see a business plan that gets to a very substantial reduction?
Yes, I think that that's, I think that that, to me, is fiscally responsible because we are so constrained.
Yeah.
In what we can, you know, in what we can do with our tax levy.
Okay. We've taken care of that.
Okay.
That's more than enough. We're talking about the budget. And I think if you have issues with it, I think you need to go to the Opera House Board meeting and start there with it. This is about the budget for this year and how this is affecting our operating. And now I have a question by Alder Johnson.
Thank you, President. I, it's kind of on the same line, so I'll just, I don't even know if I want to... Bill, being on the Opera Board, I learned more about it this year that what I didn't know is about the salaries as far as being part of...
Can you talk into the mic more?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I thought I was. About the salaries of the employees that are part of your budget. Like, if we have EMS and police, that's part of a service we get, and we pay their salaries. So I just want people to be clear that it's not just the overhead of the Opera House. It's for employees that are being paid that are coming for the budget, too.
Yeah, and actually, none of that money goes towards operations in any sense, other than the staffing. But, and I don't mean to belabor a point that, as pointed out, maybe is better addressed at the Opera House Board, but I think it's completely legitimate, you know, to bring that up. Obviously, we want to see a reduction there. You know, it gets under my skin only because of the amount of that dollar amount relative to the overall operating budget of the city. And I don't know what, what is the overall operating budget of the city? What's the total, roughly rounding?
14 million?
Yeah, if you count the services, up to around 14.
It's about 14 million. And we're talking about, you know, $170,000. And then I see what that does to the community, and I've seen what it's done over the course of the last decade, and what I can see it doing in the coming decade. And I don't know if that'll make it a budget-neutral item or not going forward, but I can say we can do more for the community for the dollars that we are receiving. And, I mean, you know, I don't know if we can make it budgetarily neutral, but I know that we can, that I see a lot of positives coming beyond what we've already done for the amount that is being spent. So, I mean, I think it's a really good value.
Alder Boersma.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I am concerned about a bit is that our Opera House is now appealing to a lot of, a lot of people, both in the city and also outside the city. I think there's been a growing trend that there are fewer local things at the Opera House because you are so crowded with other venues, other people coming into the... And I've had this, I've had this concern for years and years and years that you, that you need to balance, I think, to get the support of the community, which I think you already have, but that you probably look to a little bit more favoring of some local, local shows than you do. Now, I know that, I know that that's not...
Well, I should probably address that just right away. We actually have more community programming now than we ever have at any point in the past, including when the, in the first 50 years of the Opera House's operation, we have more events that are from Stoughton, that are from community groups in Stoughton than we ever have before.
Bill, I know, I know that, I know that there's been some decline because, you know, I'm involved with a number...
There actually hasn't been.
I don't want to argue with this on this, but I know there's some local, some local venues that try to get into the Opera House that have a difficult time because you are so booked. And I think you need to keep...
I wonder who that is.
I think you need to keep that up. I mean, I think you need to look at it. And I would say that if you're going to have a business plan, that that should be also some reaching out to people who are local, who can, who can use it. And I, I do see some decline in the ability for us to get into the Opera.
There just simply isn't. I can sit you down and I can count off the events for you if that will help alleviate those concerns.
Well, I think that that's, I think that that would be a fine thing to also include in a plan.
Yeah, and I can do a count on that and present it to you at the, at the budget approval meeting.
Okay.
So that you can see that that actually is not the case, or even in fact, true.
Okay. Well, I just experienced it. That's true. So, but if you can document, I think that it's, I, and you're crowded, and I understand that. But I think that there should be, and maybe, maybe you're reaching out to venues that, you know, in the weekdays, maybe, and maybe not so much on weekends. Maybe that's what I'm saying, but who knows?
Okay. Mayor, you had a...
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. So, as Bill mentioned, we have talked not only one-on-one, but with the committee about putting together a business plan. And I think we'll be able to put something together once we have a clear understanding of what we're going to do with the bank and how much space that's going to create for, for other opportunities. And we're going to want to get council feedback on that. So I think we'll work that into probably, you know, more for next year's budget than the one that we're working on right now. And there are a number of, of local things. And, you know, the balance is, is, you know, do we want to let a local group use the Opera House for free instead of having an event where we're actually generating revenue? And how do we find that balance, to your point? Especially on the weekends, because that's like a lot of businesses, and in entertainment in particular, that's where the highest demand is.
Well, when I came on board in 2007, groups like the Festival Choir, the Chamber Singers, the City Band, they'd all been priced out of the Opera House by the, by the person who was the director for a year in the middle there. And they were not coming and playing at the Opera House anymore. That was all done. The Greig Mill Chorus, that was all done. That wasn't happening anymore. Now, those groups are basically using, using the facility for very, very small amount of whatever revenues they might bring in. We're not charging them basically anything upfront. And all those groups have come back, and they're all performing at the Opera House. We've got the City Band, the Festival Choir, the Chamber Singers. Greig Mill Chorus is rehearsing up there every other Tuesday. We've got a music appreciation event that's going on. They used to be at the Senior Center. When they outgrew the space down there, we have those there every Monday, even though, despite the, our staffing constraints. There's just enormous amount of community events going on. And I, I'm just mystified by that perception. And it tells me that, that, you know, that you're not looking.
So I think the bottom line is, is we're not going to be able to solve all the concerns that are raised tonight. But we are working toward looking at ways we can find balances and then generate additional revenues. Because the Opera House, on ticket sales alone, I don't think it could ever be self-sufficient. It's not really even set up as an enterprise fund. So if you look at some of the other departments that we provide services, we subsidize them, too. I mean, you could say the same thing about Park and Rec. They're providing services for our communities that people of all ages enjoy. And we have to provide staffing for that as well. So, you know, we're trying to do a lot of things in the community, and they all cost money. And we're certainly, you know, hear what you're saying. And we're working toward, not only with the Opera House, but any opportunity we find to increase revenue or, you know, decrease expenses. I think that's what the process is all about. So we certainly hear you loud and clear. But like everything else that we're trying to provide the service, you know, there's benefits for the community and for the businesses in the community. And I think the Opera House plays a huge role in economic development. And it's really hard to put a price tag on that. But if you compare it to the study we recently received for the Whitewater Park, where it says every person that would use that park is going to spend $68 while you're here. And somewhere in town, you would hope that the Opera House would generate the same type of economic development. The challenge right now is we're not capturing any of that additional $68 they're spending in town. And I think that's what the business plan that Denise is talking about is all about.
Well, I have to be careful not to step on the toes of the businesses that the Opera House has helped to, to start up and stay in business. So it's kind of a fine line that we have to figure out and work with the community on, the business community, that is.
All right. I have O'Connor, Jensen, Bartlett, and then Boersma.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with what the mayor said in terms of the benefit that we get from the Opera House for pretty minimal investment. I don't see that as a problem whatsoever. I think you run pretty lean on your employee staff. And I suspect that holds you back in able to hold shows during the middle of the week and whatnot. But my primary question was, with the McFarland State Bank, is, are you planning anything to do with that this year? Or is that all going to be in the future?
It really depends on the speed at which the rest of that project goes forward. I think there's things that we can do immediately that, that are kind of the kinds of things that people would think about, just simply having additional space to do things like have a space that's available for merchandise sales, potentially concessions, initially just working on the issue of, say, maybe having water for sale or things like that, and avoiding the issue of alcohol altogether. But, I mean, there's those sorts of straightforward things that I think we could do right away. And then there's other more ambitious ideas that I think we could start to work on as soon as we get a better picture of where we are at.
So you're not budgeting anything for this year for that?
No. Not in '19.
All right. Great. You asked. Then let's hear from Matt.
Yeah, just had two questions, if I can. First, your health insurance savings. You had, this year you had two employees, two Signal and one family plan. And next year, you just have two on a single plan. Are you, do you have one position open, or just one that moved off the plan?
We have one that, you know, bless their heart, they don't need the insurance coverage to have it from their spouse.
Just checking. I wasn't worried if you had an opening or not, so that's good. Okay. And I guess one other question was, the net of revenue and appropriations, you have about $33,000 there. What is that going to, and do we need to budget to have about that much? Or could we cut that in half and leave about $15,000 back in the general fund? It's not a ton of money overall, but it would definitely help other areas. Did you use that full, what are you using that $14,000 for this year for?
Well, basically, what it comes, what it comes down to is that the proposed 2018 budget numbers, and it's the same deal with 2019, is that I booked all of the 18, 19, 2018, so yeah, the 18, oh wait, the 19, yeah, the 18, 19 performance season. And then done projections on what I expect to sell in terms of tickets for each of those shows. And then what I expect the cost to be in terms of what we're paying the performer, what we're covering as far as hospitality expenses or equipment expenses. And then come up with a, with a net number for what we're making off of those shows. Then also gone in and done a projection on, on our memberships and donations and all that kind of stuff to get a bottom line on our season. Then I take those season numbers and use them as the calendar year numbers for the calendar year that's coming up, because I don't know what's going to happen in the second half of '19. So in the past, I've budgeted very tightly. And that 14, I think, is, is pretty tight. And it's an interesting dynamic between the year, the calendar year and the season year. But that number is, is larger just from, just because there's such a large number when you look at the amount of dollars going out the door that needs to be compensated for. That's the guarantees largely. I mean, it's $418,000 that we're spending. We know that. As far as ticket sales go, you know, we, we need to, I kind of tried to budget in for mistakes because that's not something that's happened in the past.
Okay. Thanks.
Another thing with that, if I might just jump into, is the Opera House is actually running a negative fund balance at this point. So I'd much rather, if they do have excess revenues, to continue to kind of build up that, that amount moving towards the positive.
Just question what number we should target for?
Yeah.
Alder Boersma?
Yeah, I want to just follow up on what Denise was saying. And that is, I think, I think it would be, I think it's, nothing happens until it's planned for. And especially with all the changes that potentially are going to happen, where you're taking over more of the, more of the facility and that kind of thing. I think that this should be, if possible, a year that, you know, some real planning goes into the whole, the whole thing. I think including, including, you know, how the, the shows and the, and the, how much, document the how much, you know, how much local stuff is happening. And how to wean yourself, I don't know if that's the correct way, but of the city coffers that we need to, this may be a good year to do that start. Because I think it, you know, I think if you look at the pattern, and I was also on the Opera House a number of years ago. And that was, and that was before you arrived, I think. But it was, it was really, really a thought that it would be a self-sufficient, you know, entity in Stoughton. And that was kind of the intent when this whole thing got started. And, you know, and the city was going to compensate for a while, but not forever. And I remember that specifically when I was on the Opera House Board when we first started it, so...
Okay. Alder Reeves?
I found, I figured it out, so never mind. Thanks.
Any other questions regarding the 2019 budget numbers? If not, thank you, Bill. Enjoy your show.
Yeah, when is the, what's the date for the final budget meeting?
We're not going to have one.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. And I'll just see you guys later.
All right. Thank you, Bill.
Merci.
We'll let, we'll let him know by email.
Okay, so...
All right.
IT is next.
Next, we have, we're going to start back up at the top now?
Yep. We'll start back with IT.
Information technology?
Yes. So we'll kind of go the same format we did last week. For those folks that weren't here last week, the items go in alphabetical order. So if I'm referring to something, it might help you kind of find it. It goes 15, 16, 17, actual activity, 18 budget, and then 19 budget, and then the variance between the two. I'll just touch on some high points, and then we'll just field questions as we move along here. So, so if we start just kind of working our way down, overall, I guess we'll start with an overall budget increase of $18,000 or 6%. IT, I'm going to tell you right now, is kind of a moving target at this point because it is kind of new. And we're, we're working to shift more costs out of individual departments over to IT that should be more IT-related. So I think the IT budget overall is going to be a work in progress for the next couple of years until we really nail that down. With that said, we'll kind of just start going through these line by line here. And I'll touch on the high points. So the first number that jumps out here is the equipment maintenance expense line. And you can see that's dropping by about $23,400 compared to 18. Again, we just budgeted this to fall more in line with the actual historical amounts that have been going in there. And you can see, we're looking at 6,500, 7,700, 9,600. 18, we jumped back up to 33,000. For some reason, it's unreasonable. So we knocked it back down to 10,000 to get that back in line in terms of what it should be. The next line there, health insurance. You can see, we see a jump of about $8,100. This will be a reoccurring theme through a bunch of the departments. They either go up by a ton or down, or down. Both, both employees in the IT department actually have the family plans. So with the new tier structure, they're getting a big hit in '19. So that's a big chunk of the increase there. The next line item that jumps out here is the outside services/contracts/website. You can see we knocked that down by about $11,000. Again, we just budgeted that to fall more in line with what the actual historical amounts are looking, looking like. And unfortunately, '18 is the only year that we have this information for. And I looked today, year-to-date, it's sitting right around $9,000. So that's the reason we dropped that one down. And then the, the second outside services/contracts line, you can see we're bumping that up by about $31,950. Again, this is just reshuffling some maintenance costs, maintenance contract costs over to IT, pulling them out of other departments. And I believe that also includes some disaster recovery that John is planning for next year. Salary is pretty straightforward. You can see the 3% jump there. And that's really all that jumped out in terms of analytics when I was looking at these line items. Any specific questions for me or John?
What does the equipment maintenance budget cover? What, what equipment is that?
It's any of the network equipment, maintenance agreements on, for instance, all the Cisco devices, switches, firewalls, the telephone system, maintenance, annual maintenance contracts.
So strictly network stuff, not individual computers?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Jensen?
Hi. Thank you. John, you know what we were talking about last night in the public safety? Would that go under your budget? Would it go under public safety, or?
It'd be a great question, and...
For someone to answer?
For someone to answer.
Okay. Because I want that to happen. So can we just put $1,000 somewhere?
Basically, what this is...
Could you enlighten us on to what that subject would be? What?
It's a secret?
Oh, okay.
Do you all remember the presidential alert announcement that came out a few weeks ago, and it went all over your cell phones?
I didn't remember. Excuse me.
Similar to that. And basically, what it was is...
Coming for me?
Yeah, exactly.
President, Tom.
Alder Tass Johnson, basically, had come up with the idea that, you know, in light of all of the...
From emoji.
Gas explosions, you know, we've got Sun Prairie, we've got Boston, we've got, you know, just a plethora of things that are going on. Would Stoughton benefit by something like that? And we looked at some possibilities, even breaking it down by district. You know how you get all those text messages from, you know, 47, 47, 47? You know, click, you know, send this text, or, you know, send, enroll to that number. It's the same type of deal. And it would be set up by, you would text District 1 to this particular phone, series of numbers, District 2 to this one. And as you did that, it would, it would put everybody in their specific district. So if you had an emergency situation within that district, those people would get in a text message. Or if you selected all four districts, it would go to everybody who signed up.
So, I found out about a gas leak in my neighborhood by someone in Madison that was going to Channel 3,000. And I was really disturbed because blocks were, I think, evacuated or asked to leave. And I know one of my friends in Sun Prairie gets texts about things that are happening if they have to evacuate or something like that. And I just would hate, with John looking into the costs, that there might be a major catastrophe, and we're not notifying our people to get out of their homes or something like that.
Matt?
Yeah, I was at the meeting, too, last night. It sounds like a good idea to me. But, I mean, we're a long way from implementation. We have to decide just what we're going to broadcast and how we're going to go about it. And the numbers I were, I was looking at weren't significant at all. You know, $1,000 or something. I think that could easily come out of contingency fund if we should decide to fund it mid-year.
I would think. That's the number, yeah. It sounds like public safety has to discuss this more with John, I would think.
There'd be a lot of mechanics that have to be worked out as far as... One of the scenarios that we threw out last night was if you've got an emergency situation, you know, who's going to be doing this? Would it be dispatch? Well, if you have an emergency situation, dispatch is extremely busy. How are they going to be doing that when their first and foremost role is to, you know, keep officer safety? You know, so it's a whole mechanic, something...
Yeah. It sounds like a process has to be worked out, so...
All right. Any other questions regarding the budget items? None? Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right.
John?
Next up, we'll go through Roddy's information here. He's got a few. Some are very straightforward, so we can probably just blow through them pretty quickly. Here's the assessor budget for next year. You can see no changes. They're actually on a locked contract. I think it started in 2016. I think it's locked for the next five years. So no changes there. Pretty, pretty easy. Any questions on the assessor? Next one here is inspection. You can see really, the only shifts here relate to employee benefits, health insurance, and salaries. Those are the big shifts here. And you can see they all went down. The reason for this is that I moved Roddy's salary that had been allocated in past years in the budget to this, to this actual department. I moved it to where time is actually being coded. So I actually moved it to planning and out of inspection. So that's why you see a decrease here. Other than that, not many... Other than that, not many, not, not any major changes here in inspection either. Any questions on this one? And then we have city buildings is up next. Again, not too many big shifts here. You can see the health insurance jumped up a little bit. Again, that's because of the majority of employees allocated to city buildings have either the family or the self-plus spouse insurance. Yes?
Yeah, so we've taken on McFarland Bank. Is this where the utilities would go for the McFarland Bank?
We would have a separate fund probably created, or separate account created for the McFarland State Bank.
And has...
Utilities for all the buildings. This is for some of them.
Okay, and so where is the McFarland Bank at then?
So that one is probably, we don't know of all the costs and everything for that, so we're probably going to set up a separate account. Either it's in the city buildings, or we're going to track it through the building maintenance fund, since there's some monies available there, and that's how we'll deal with nineteen. And then twenty-twenty would be budgeted differently.
We can take utilities out of building maintenance?
There's no real specifications in what we're doing with it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Why the significant reduction in repairs and maintenance? I, I missed it.
It's just related to the trends that we've been experiencing in, in the facility, so been positive.
Seventeen, I think there was a lot of water damage. I wasn't here, but apparently a lot of water damage. I looked year-to-date, we're at forty-five hundred dollars right now. Any questions on city buildings? Moving on to planning. Again, you can see there's shifts in employee benefits, health insurance, and then the salaries. Those are the big jumps here, but again, that's due to shifting the costs out of inspection into planning, where the time has historically been, being coded. Again, we're seeing the family and the self-plus spouse insurance plans with Rodney's staff. So that's a big hit this year too with the, the tier adjustment. Let's see, other than that, you can see operating expenses are going up about fifty-two hundred dollars. Again, we just did that to fall more in line with what the actual trends have been. I looked year-to-date, this, today, and we're at about eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, so twenty-two thousand two fifty is a good number for nineteen. Any questions on planning? Another fun one. This one's kind of hard to follow, but this is the stormwater budget. So the stormwater funds itself through its own rates. You can see there's a significant jump in terms of percentage, and that's the table on the far right-hand side. If you see a seven percent increase in rates, you kind of think, oh, my gosh, that's a ton. But that four dollars and twenty-eight cents is the actual annual impact per ERU. And the reason this is happening, obviously, we see some shifts in operating costs that hopefully, in the end, will, will create some efficiencies and reduce capital costs. I think Rodney has about a twenty-one thousand dollar leaf study in his budget this year. And the plan for that is that down the road, it'll reduce some capital infrastructure costs that we would have to, have to incur. So that's one of the hits in two thousand nineteen. And then we did, I did add a new line this year. It's, it's called rate of return on net plant balance. So here's, there's kind of a weird thing about stormwater budgets. It's a new utility, so basically, all of its infrastructure has been funded through debt up until twenty nineteen. So the plan for twenty nineteen is to fund all infrastructure costs through the, the built-up fund balance. So you can see in, in the rate structure and how we design these, we are recovering through rates the debt service cost. But now the utility is kind of at a point where it can self-sustain itself for a while and pay for its own infrastructure costs, but we're not earning any money on the actual assets that are in the ground already, so I just built in a very, very small rate of return on those existing assets to basically start building up almost, we'll call it a replacement fund for future years. So this will hopefully begin to eliminate the need for the stormwater to rely on debt unless it's a big project. This is very similar to how the water and electric utilities work, where they earn about a five percent rate of return on their plant balances. I think the number I used in here, I started with a one percent rate of return, so it's very small, and the plan would be to kind of just inch this up year after year, so maybe we go to one and a half percent next year, two percent next year. And, and that's the plan for it, because the weird thing with this proposed budget and how we're recovering rates right now is you can see there's no, there's nothing in there for depreciation. And this is kind of built, is, is building a way to recover that depreciation cost to replace the assets down the road. Does that make sense? It's kind of a whole new line, so that's why we're starting to see this big jump. It won't be this big from here on out. We're kind of taking the big hit in nineteen, and hopefully, we can just start inching up that rate of return to more of a reasonable number, like three or four percent, and kind of get the, the stormwater to be more self-sustaining by its rates. So any questions on stormwater?
Here?
So I've been up in Naddles this week for, for a conference, and one municipality, one of the things that they've done, and I'm not recommending we do it here, but I'm just sharing this, is what they're doing is instead of special assessments, they're actually charging their road projects to the stormwater fund and using the, the same formula to fund their road improvements instead of doing special assessments on everything. So I thought that was kind of an interesting idea. I don't know if it's a good idea for Stoughton, but it kind of gives you a flavor of where other municipalities are right now, and how we're trying to work together to think outside the box, so I just wanted to share that little tidbit with everybody as long as we're here.
Any more questions on the stormwater?
Okay, you're off the hook, Rodney.
You're off the hook. So Rodney can go.
He says he's going to leave as soon as his computer dies, so.
Do you have inspections to do yet tonight?
Early tomorrow.
All right, so we'll start off with Brett's information here. We'll get one of the big ones out of the way here, highway and street maintenance. Start with the bottom line. You can see we're jumping, I'll scroll down a little bit here so you can see it. You can see we're jumping about twenty-five thousand dollars, but in the scheme of Brett's overall budget, that's only two percent. Okay, so not a big jump at all in terms of percentage. And then I'll just start working my way down. So the first number that kind of pops out there is contracted services slash urban forestry. You can see us dropping by about ninety-five hundred dollars.
Can I touch on that real, real quick? The reason why that looks like a decrease is that we actually carried over money from seventeen into eighteen. So we actually aren't decreasing the actual budget that we had in there from years past. It's been fifteen thousand, or fifty thousand, excuse me. In, in twenty seventeen and eighteen, we carried over ninety-five hundred, so that's why it looks like it's decreasing in nineteen, but it's really staying stagnant.
Okay, so the next one that, oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Does any of this cover the debt challenge stuff?
No, that's all capital. Animal Ashbor, is that? Ashbor?
Tree commission, as I understand it, what's happening with the tree commission when you're planting trees, that developers are planting the trees, and that we are getting some kind of break because they are guaranteeing the trees that we plant. Could you just tell people about that?
So, yeah, we, you know, anytime we do a development, they do, are required to plant trees per our, our formula. We have a set price in place that we set annually. And then through our contracts that we've negotiated, there's a one-year warranty in all trees that are planted.
And that includes trees that we plant on, on the park roads, and, and also the developers are using that service too?
Same contract, so we can control what's planted in our urban forest. Correct. No, we're, we're planting that, we're planting the trees that the developer pays for through our contract.
Okay, but there's a guarantee when we buy the trees, is that right?
Yes.
And that they'll replace the trees if they go bad?
The nursery will replace, replace the trees within one year if they...
And that's not how it used to be?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, just moving down the line here, you can see the, the next big change here is health insurance. We have a decrease of about eighteen thousand dollars. Again, that's because seventy-five percent of the streets employees either have single or self-plus spouse insurance. So they're getting a little bit of a decrease there. Moving down a little bit, you can see a change for six thousand dollars here, this dam inspection. This is actually a one-time, one-time expense, I think every ten years.
It's, it's our ten-year inspection.
We won't be seeing that for a while. Moving down the line again, you can see the tree plantings for the developer, that changed by about thirteen thousand dollars. But again, this is offset by revenue.
I have a question. The dam inspection, why wouldn't that be, like, building, like, in the maintenance from, from the maintenance fund?
I imagine it could be. I think we just put it here because Brett, Brett's kind of in charge of it, so.
We, we operate the dam, so.
Pardon?
We operate the dam from a public works perspective, so it's put in our budget. But it could be wherever you want to put it.
Well, I, I'm just saying that we have money in, you know, our maintenance fund balance, and it's supposed to be for, you know, like, all the buildings, but I would assume, you know, maybe this might, we could look into seeing if this would be part, this could be used.
That's up to you guys, where you want to put this.
And I'll, I'll look at the policy too, and if it makes sense to shift it, we'll shift it. Okay, so we touched on the tree plantings. Wages, you can see we're seeing a, a jump of about twenty thousand six hundred and fifty, but again, that's only four percent. And then the wages, part-time, it's a, a jump of six thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Again, the, the main reason for that is it's due to one additional staff who is actually already on staff this year. So the shift is, is larger compared to two thousand and eighteen, but that staff is already on hand, and I don't think it was budgeted for in two thousand and eighteen. Any questions for highway and street maintenance?
Alder Reeves?
I'm just curious what equipment we might lease for streets?
Sure. Anytime we have a, a project that, like, case in point, we, we did our, our compost facility, we actually built a road, and so we rented a TracO. So that's, that's two thousand dollars. So we do have projects that come up through the year that instead of buying a five-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of equipment, we'll rent it for a week or, or two weeks for, you know, a thousand dollars.
So this represents a lot of different pieces of equipment, probably, not a contractor.
Yep, and then we get the same item in, in parks too.
We also try to borrow from other municipalities if we can, and we work out an agreement with them as well, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, I'm a big believer in regionalization, you know, sharing resources. You know, us being a part of that too, letting other people use our equipment, but there has to be a contract in place, and it could be some monetary exchange in that too.
Are there any costs in there associated with the new building, or was it all capitalized, everything for moving, everything, and anything we needed?
There, there's some increase in utility costs for one year, because we're going to be carrying two, two buildings for about two months. So we did increase our, our utility costs for just, you know, I think it's twenty-five hundred dollars. That's just because we're going to be having two buildings that are operating kind of simultaneously, unfortunately, in the winter when our costs are the highest, but that's, we had to account for that.
Where's that budget for the old building utility costs? Are we, is that budgeted somewhere? That we'll still be paying utilities on the old building once you're out? Is that in someone else's budget for the rest of the year next year?
Once we're out, essentially, it goes to the RDA, and I, I believe it's going to be mothballed. I can't...
It's going to shut it off, and...
Well, they're tearing it down next year, so that's the point.
Okay, is that...
We still have to work out an agreement with the transfer to the RDA, and we have a request, but we haven't brought it to council yet, because do we have a move date?
It's all contingent upon when the, end of construction, essentially when we get occupancy. So we're, we're making plans for the, the end of the year, early, early next year. So, you know, the sooner the better, but obviously, they, they have till the twenty-eighth of December to complete the building.
Alder Duran's.
Yeah. While the electric and water may be turned off, you still have to pay the stormwater fees because of all the impermeable surface. So we don't know when there's going to be a transfer. We don't know when it's going to come down, and guess what? You have to pay for the stormwater fees, because of course, we're paying for it, you know, on the mill fab site and those other sites there, so that is something that needs to be worked in.
There's money, money there. Our, our operating costs for the new facility should be much lower than our current facility because of the efficiencies that we've built into it. So I think we have enough to, to get us through until demolition, whenever that may take place.
Any questions left? All right, let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, Brett's got a couple more here. Should go pretty quickly. Snow removal, you can see we dropped it a little bit. Moving it kind of more in line with historical, but again, with snow removal, you just never know. So we didn't drop it very much, just two thousand dollars. It's not something you can really drop to fall really in line with historical information, just due to the nature of, you know, Wisconsin winters. Any questions on snow removal? All right, signs and markings. You can see no change here. Costs have stayed pretty consistent over the last three years, so eighteen thousand looks like a pretty good number for two thousand and nineteen. Any questions on signs and markings? Street lighting, again, you can see we dropped it a little bit compared to last year. Kind of falling in more in line with historical information. I looked at where we're at year-to-date right now. We're at eighty-eight thousand dollars, which if you pro-rate that out, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand looks pretty good for two thousand and nineteen as well. So any questions on street lighting costs? All right, sanitation, no change. I believe we're under a contract, and the rates have not changed. Is that, this is the last year?
Correct. Through two thousand and nineteen, part of our five-year contract is that the rates remain the same for nineteen. They may go up in, in two thousand and twenty and subsequent years, but they can only go up based on the consumer price index for all urban communities, for the Midwest region. So typically, that's been about two percent, three percent, somewhere in there. So we're not looking at a huge jump in costs.
Any questions on sanitation? Right. Cemetery costs, you can see we've run pretty consistent over the last few years, so no change in eighteen as well compared, or nineteen compared to eighteen, yes? Alder Borzeman?
I just have one question, and that is, how many, how many cemeteries do we have one, or do we have...
We operate two, Riverside and Weeder Prairie.
And so the other cemeteries, St. Anne's and the Lutheran one, is that's cared for by themselves? We don't have anything to do with that?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions on cemetery?
Okay, here we are to parks. Again, we'll just kind of start going through these line by line in terms of the big numbers that jump out here. Health insurance, you can see, went up a little bit, twenty-three hundred dollars, but in terms of percentages, it's around thirty-four percent. Again, that's just due to the, the nature of health, the health insurance tiers this year. Operating expenses, we're increasing by about eight thousand dollars. Again, that's just to put it more in line with the historical information that we've been seeing. I looked...
Sorry, and also, the more structures we take on, the more maintenance they take, so there is accounting for extra facilities that we're, we're taking on.
Yep, and year-to-date, I looked, we're, we're already at around twenty-seven thousand dollars, which is where the eighteen budget was. So again, we jumped this up to, to account for the historical information. The next line here, you can see seasonal temporary went up about twelve thousand six hundred dollars. I have some notes at the bottom there, but you can see we shifted some hours for one employee whose, whose rate was higher than the previous individuals, and then also due to a forestry intern that's already on staff. So again, a lot of this, a lot of this information, a lot of this has already happened in two thousand and eighteen. We're just carrying it forward for the nineteen budget.
And we also increased hours from ten thirty-nine to one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. That's the, essentially, the limit that we can increase without impacting benefits.
Alder Borzeman?
I, I don't know if this is the correct way, place to ask the question, but I was recently checking on how much...
but I was recently checking on how much it costs for a new developer to pay for their parks fee when they do a, when they do a development or when there's a new house built and that kind of thing. And I couldn't believe how much it costs to the people who are either building or developing, and I know that's passed on to the consumer. I've had a concern about whether or not we have a disincentive for building in the city based on that's fairly substantial amount that people have to pay for park fees and whether or not that's evenly distributed across the community because it's all that sort of upfront cost, and I'm not sure that it's being, it's shared within the whole community. But maybe, I don't know who can answer that question, but it seems like it's a bit of a disincentive, I think, for.
This budget's for park maintenance.
Okay, so that's something totally different.
If you'd like, I can respond to that. That's an impact fee that we established a number of years ago. We took into account the capital infrastructure and improvements being made to parks. And so part of the park impact fee is actually related to those, distribution of those expenses for capital expenditures for parks. The sites that are more difficult to absorb or think about are the ones that are changing purpose. So if you've got a platted lot that was slated for a single-family lot, and you're changing it and you want to have multi-family units on it, then that is then imposed the new park impact fee for all the units that would be placed there. Each dwelling unit is charged per dwelling unit. Similarly, if a property is platted as a single-family lot, for example, in theory, that lot would have contributed to parkland at the time that was created. If it's now creating an additional impact on it, there's a fee in lieu of parkland dedication. So if you've now increased the density on that parcel by ten units, for example, we then utilize a fee in lieu of to be equivalent to that additional nine units that are being created for that parcel, much like a new development. When they come in, they're required to develop so many acres of parkland or dedicate so many acres of parkland. It's the same formula for redevelopment. Case in point, and some will argue whether it's a multi-family or senior, but we don't discriminate by age or use. It's a dwelling unit, all dwelling units are impacted by that, whether they're senior housing or other housing. But it is something that can be looked at, but it is an impact fee that we've established, and it's been a longstanding practice.
Well, you know that we're revising the Parks and Open Space Plan. The council will see it in December. And so we've hired a consultant, and so the consultant helps us to determine, are we in line with other communities? And so I think that it has been shown that we're pretty much, you know, in line. I mean, there was a long time when we only had, you know, either you gave land or you did in lieu of, and there was no fee for any of the development of the park, you know. So now because that is something that is happening in all the other communities, there is a fee to develop the park so that you don't just have empty land there when you're building homes. So I don't think what we're doing is really any different than any other community in Dane County or in the counties surrounding us, so.
It's just that if you've lived in your home forever and you don't change anything, then you don't, you don't get zapped with it. And whether or not, I think we just have to be careful to be fair for each, every resident rather than zapping every new development.
Well, you'll see in the Parks and Open Space Plan that in fact, we have, there's going to be a capital improvement budget for five years. And he's identified one point six million dollars in improvements to our parks. And that then would be probably, most of it would be borrowed money. So that then would be spread out to everybody in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think the last line item to touch on is utilities. You can see we increased that by about five thousand dollars. And again, that's with the Nordic Ridge splash pad online, so we bumped that up to twenty-one thousand dollars. I looked year-to-date, today we're at nineteen thousand dollars, so twenty-one thousand is a pretty good estimate for nineteen, so. Any questions for Brett on parks? Okay.
Thank you, Brett.
Next up, we have Senior Center.
Hi.
Hello, Cindy.
Hi.
Okay, so just a couple of big items jump out on Cindy's information here. You can see health insurance jumped up twelve thousand, five hundred thirty-four. Again, it's just the nature of the beast with this new tier insurance. The majority of the Senior Center employees have family insurance plans, so they took a big hit this year. Moving down the line, the next item, you can see salaries up two thousand fifty-two. That's that three percent mark there. Wages went up thirty-three hundred dollars, that's a two percent. And then the wages for the senior case management went up forty-six hundred dollars. So if you look at the increase overall, five percent, half of that relates to the health insurance hit that the Senior Center is taking in nineteen. Any questions on the Senior Center budget?
I'm sorry, so could you just tell us on the Meals on Wheels, where they come from and how they're paid for? And does that come out of your budget, Cindy, or what?
No, it's Meals on Wheels, well, part of it does. I apologize. So Meals on Wheels is a contract through Dane County that we administer. The meals are under a contract that come out of Consolidated Foods out of Verona. We deliver approximately about eighty a day. The monies that come of donations for Meals on Wheels go directly back to the county. The county in turn then pays for some of the salary of the person that manages our kitchen. The city pays some of her salary, the county pays some of her salary.
And so the meals, where are the meals prepared and developed?
It's a contract that the county administers that it's Consolidated Foods out of Verona.
Okay, and is it, and that's some sort of thing that people pay for as many meals as they get, or is it?
On a donation basis.
And does it kind of equalize out for?
No, the county still puts in some money towards the program.
But the city does not, then?
Not towards that, for the meals, no, for Kim's salary, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm, what is the kitchen fund? Is that for the, you all sponsor some meals? I'm trying to.
We do, we sponsor some meals. We also, in every day, there's coffee and treats and things that are available. So it's all of the food that we prepare, it's an in-and-out, it's by donation. And then from those donations, we purchase the material that we need.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, next up, we have the clerks' budget. Again, we'll kind of just go line by line. You can see health insurance is going up about four thousand dollars or twelve percent. Again, this is due to two-thirds of the clerk department employees having family insurance plans. You can see salaries went from zero to sixty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars. Again, that's just due to the restructure in the clerk department promoting Holly to the department head, so now they have a salaries line. And then if you go on to the wages, you can see it dropped by about forty-eight thousand, seven hundred seventy-six. Again, that's just due to Holly moving up to salary and then some increased wages, I think on the deputy clerk side of it. I think she came in at a little bit higher rate than where Kelly was. So overall, you can see a total shift of twenty thousand, six hundred forty dollars. Most of that has to do with the increase in salary amounts. Any specific questions on clerk? Moving on, one more for Holly. This is the election one. You can see we're dropping those costs down by about fourteen thousand dollars. Again, it just has to do with two thousand and nineteen being an off-election year. So if you look at the costs for two thousand and fifteen and seventeen, and then where we're budgeting for nineteen, it looks pretty reasonable in terms of overall election costs. Any questions on election?
I have a question for Holly. Holly, have you looked at the cost of, say, having, voting at like the library? Because I know that they started doing that in Madison. And I've had a couple of people actually come up to me and ask me if we're going to do that in the future. And so in anticipation of like, say, the presidential election or something, you know, doing something, say like on Saturday, since the library is open on Saturday, you know, I don't know if you've, you know, thought about that or explored any of that or the cost, but if not, I think that, you know, the community is going to start to expect some of that since I'm being stopped and I'm being asked about it.
Right, so that's something that we're working towards to make early voting or absentee voting more available. Starting this year, we're going to be open later that last week, and we extended it another week this time. Two thousand and nineteen, that's not something I've thought about at the library just because it's going to be just the spring election and possibly primary. But for two thousand and twenty, that's something that we could look into doing, especially at the library. I don't know if it's something that we would want to have there all day like Madison does and then bringing the ballots back to our office. I don't know how much cost there is associated with that, but we could certainly look into doing like a couple Saturdays at the library.
And actually, you know, testing it, say like on a spring election, you know, where you don't have quite the same turnout, you could actually maybe get some of the bugs out of it or something.
Right.
How late is the library open?
Library's open till five o'clock on Saturday, but you don't necessarily have to have the hours like all day Saturday. You could, you know, limit the hours, you know, because more than likely, what would happen is you'd have to close it at a certain time because if people are waiting in line, you have to serve those people. So, you know, you'd have to probably close at three or four o'clock just to be on the safe side so that you don't keep the library open, you know, too long.
So you're mostly concerned about Saturday voting hours?
Well, Saturday or even Sunday, you know, people who, you know, work late, you know, this was one of the concerns, you know, a woman told me, she said her son just works late, and it's hard for him to even get in, you know, to do even six o'clock because of his hours and where he works. And so I was just, you know, throwing it out there that having, you know, some weekend hours hopefully could satisfy some people, and since the library is already open.
Go ahead, and then I'll have a follow-up when you're done.
The library closes at nine, and I already started talking to Richard, the director of the library, about this, letting him know about.
So I mean, I think what we can do is, you know, once we figure out what we're going to do with the bank, that may or may not change the direction this discussion goes. Regardless of what we have to do, we have to look at training and staffing as an additional cost and factor that into the budget and then try to figure out, you know, how that'll work. Because, I mean, we're more than happy to try to provide the service, but if we're going to burn up, you know, hundreds of dollars for a handful of votes, we have to weigh that.
But we won't know that until we try it.
Well, and my concern is, we can run a pilot, but we got to make sure there's an understanding that it is only a pilot because if we, we don't want people to get confused and think that it's permanent if we don't know. So personally, if we move to the bank and the clerk's office moves into the bank, it might be more efficient just to extend the hours there than it would be to have it at the library. And those are the things we'd have to talk about, you know. I mean, we could have later hours at City Hall, and it would probably be easier for us because then we don't have to haul stuff back and forth. And I think it would be better security that way also. So I think there's a lot of things that we want to take into consideration. I don't think, you know, I don't know if we'll be able to do it next year or not. I guess we'll have to see where we land, but we may just get an ad hoc committee together or something and have that discussion.
I have, I've had a number of conversations with a few constituents as to why where voting takes place, you know, why it's been for years and years to be voting at First Lutheran and different sites. So I know that some people are, you know, wondering how that, how it could be potentially changed to different sites and whether or not that would be more fair for both constituents and also for the sites that are hosting these things. I did talk to Mayor Swadley a while ago about that and whether or not there is any possibility of us looking at whether or not we have the correct sites to vote at. And that could be a discussion related to this whole topic as well.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair one. There's going to be, you know, the census in two thousand and twenty and then redistricting after that. So to minimize the confusion, I think we have to really have a long-term view of this and outline so we're not changing the voting location, then we redistrict it and change it again a year or two later.
I remember when we voted in this room. Rodney, did you vote in this room? All four districts?
Really?
Tom? Yes. Do you remember that? No, I remember. All four districts voted in this room. You should have seen the lines.
So I think maybe as we move into next year, what we'll do is we'll come up with some recommendations, and if the council wants to put together an ad hoc group to investigate this, we can do that.
So it could include the library, libraries being a potential place, city halls continued, and whether or not we have the right places that people need to vote at during election day. So, okay.
Any other questions on election?
No. Oh, we should have Russia help pay your salary.
Yeah, really.
Well, don't you know that they're going to go in and change the voter list? That's what I heard.
I thought that'd be a quick one. Okay, legislative, pretty straightforward, no changes here. Any questions on the legislative? This is you guys. Judicial, again, a couple of little changes here just in terms of the three percent increase in wages. Of course, employee benefits would follow suit with that. Any questions on the judicial side of things? Finance director. So we'll go through this. Obviously, we're seeing some big shifts here in terms of the restructure and everything that happened this year, so I'll just kind of go through a couple of the bigger line items. You can see, you can see health insurance went up about twenty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-nine. Again, that's just due to moving from the previous finance director who had a single plan over to Ryan and I who have the family plans. And basically, this is getting split fifty-fifty between the utilities right now. Next line down is the salaries. Again, you can see the fifteen thousand dollar jump there, again, just mainly due to the restructure and how we're allocating things. We broke this down, a hundred and four to the city and then about ninety-six to the utilities. Taxi grant, you can see is going up by about fifty-nine thousand dollars. Again, this is offset by revenue. It's just we're kind of at the mercy of the grant application itself. It's not due till December thirty-first, so we're kind of, this is an estimate right now, but the majority of these costs are offset by the actual grant revenue itself. So big shift on the expense side, but it's offset with the revenue. And then the next jump again is the five thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars in wages. Again, that's bringing on the assistant finance director, and then the pay increases for Lisa and Debbie. Any questions on the finance director budget? And it should stabilize then in two thousand and twenty. Okay, that's all we had scheduled for tonight, so November first. We have a couple more, just recreation. We have a couple more, just recreation, library, RDA. We'll talk a little bit about TIPS. Go through the mayor's budgets, touch on CIP a little bit. I'll have a summary of all the kind of discussions we've had, any changes we've had. And then that should really be about it for the November 1st discussion. The agenda will probably get sent out to you folks on Tuesday, if that's okay. There won't really be any new information aside from what you've already received. But I'm going to be out of town for a few days, so I'll get that out Tuesday after we reach you guys. All right, there's no questions. We're done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Good night.
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly.